Hey, Pem.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the technical difficulties.
I think a couple people are having issues actually.
Are we waiting? Let me see if we got Stephanie.
Steve. Steve's on his way in as well.
Okay. Okay. George. So just Steve and Dave.
Yeah, Dave will not be joining, I don't think.
Okay. I was unaware. I thought that he would be here for his final swan song.
He let me know he was moving on October 23rd. So hopefully, hopefully he joins as a member of the public so we can talk about him, but uh.
All right.
And Pam, you have the script, the script to read at the beginning?
I do.
Okay.
All right. So since we have a majority, we can go ahead and start the meeting. So. Well, call the meeting to order at 6:07 PM. And as last time, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting that we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As chairperson of the South Eagan Crawford School Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. In accordance with the emergency order and confirming that, one, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All meetings of the committee and selected legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, www.su39.org. Number two, we have provided public notice with the necessary information for accessing the meeting. Number three, we are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone does have a problem, please email Abby Wallace via A Wallace. That's A W A L L A C E at sau39.org. Number four, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Number five, please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Number six, finally, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where they are and if anyone else is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So having said that, I'd like to proceed through a roll call vote and usually I go alphabetically, but I don't think Steve as well as yet. So I'll start with Stephanie.
I'm here. Do you want to hear if I'm here and I'm alone?
Yes, please.
Yes, I'm here and I'm alone. I'm at home in Amherst.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor.
I'm home and alone.
Amy.
Home alone.
Who else? Oh, George. Sorry, not my view.
I'm in the bunker and I'm alone.
And I am also in my house in Melbourne and I am in the room alone. And then when Steve joins in, we can ask him the same. Okay. So first thing we have is a opportunity for public input. Do we have anybody at this point? I don't see any. Raised hands or participants in any kind of chats at this point?
Well, I think we're all set.
Okay, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. We have, hopefully everyone has had the opportunity to take a look at the consent agenda, including the draft minutes, the transfer approval of $500, the August 2020 treasures report. Can I have a motion? To accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, motion from Stephanie.
Second.
Second by Amy. Okay, any discussion or anything? Anybody want to pull any part of the minutes? Seeing none. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Stephanie?
Yes.
Amy?
A C S.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Laura, yes.
And Gronster, yes. So that'll pass 5-0 with one absence. Okay, after that, I think we have a quick superintendent's report.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three, three things. First, regarding the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee, that group, which is an official subcommittee of the SAU Board, has been meeting regularly, as everybody knows. This Thursday at the SAU meeting is an important day. They're providing their report back to the SAU Board. It's a substantial report and with lots of work put into it, our chair, Amy Facy and Shannon Gascoigne and all the members, Roger Preston, and they've done just an unbelievable amount of work. And so they asked me to give a preview to this Sohegan Board tonight because this board doesn't meet until late November and wanted to give you folks a heads up about what was coming, even though each of you participate as members of the SAU Board. It's important that you know what's coming down the pike. So as you'll remember, the purpose of the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee was to coordinate the long-term facilities plans for Amherst and Sohegan in such a way as to make sure the tax impact to our residents is predictable, is planned, and in the long term is consistent. Recognizing that we have facility projects at three of our schools, Sohegan High School, Amherst Middle School, as well as the Clark Wilkins Elementary School. We really wanted to find a way to sequence those projects in a way that makes sense for taxpayers. And so as a preview of what the JFAC is recommending, they're recommending that all three facilities projects move forward as quickly as possible, but their sequence in such a way as to prioritize the two Amherst projects, the Clark Wilkins project and an AMS renovation project, and then to allow for the Sohegan 2.0 project to come some number of years down the road, but to still prioritize some of the high priority things that were included as part of the Sohegan 2.0, namely the inclusion of the upgrade of science laboratories and also working on securing the entrance to Sohegan High School. And so their recommendation will be to attempt to find either through unassigned fund balance or by a warrant article this coming March to raise the funds to do those two immediate projects right away, and that will give us the opportunity to wait for the two Amherst projects to be completed and for the tax rate to stabilize and to be able to absorb the Sohegan project. They looked significantly into what can be done with the HVAC systems right away in order to upgrade those sooner than later. The difficulty with upgrading the HVAC systems at Sohegan is that to do that, we would have to take out ceilings. To take out ceilings, we have to take out lights. To take out lights, we have to take out the fire suppression systems. And before long, we're doing not only a significant portion of the Sohegan 2.0 project, but maybe even more than half of that overall project, just to get the HVAC work done. So instead, Roger and the facilities crew are doing what we can with controls and with upgrades to and repairs, really, to existing equipment to make it be able to last until we're able to sequence the Sohegan 2.0 project. So for the purposes of the Sohegan Board, you should look for recommendations that a Sohegan 2.0 project comes five or so years down the road and also that, that there's a priority focus on the science lab upgrades and the securing of the entrance at Sohegan in the near future. That is about as brief as I possibly could be when we're talking about several many millions of dollars, but many of you are members of that committee. So Amy, Stephanie, Pam, anything I should highlight that I haven't already? Please jump in.
I would just say that there was a third project to look at the lockers as well. So those are the three, three main projects that we're looking to recommend work be done as soon as possible. Anything to add, Stephanie? I know you're on that subcommittee.
Yeah, no, I think that's it. It's, we definitely want to look at ways that we can fund those science lab projects and the security front entrance in the locker room sooner rather than later, but we need to make sure we can look at all available options and there'll be a discussion later November, December for us.
Yeah, and I'd like, also, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, you'll see some, some rough estimates assigned. The subcommittee does believe that they can do some more work on those estimates and look to get the cost down even, even further. They're going to be looking to us for some direction on that, but that's something that they, they definitely want to highlight in their presentation.
Yeah, and I like to add also that, you know, it makes a lot of sense and hopefully everybody has opportunities to tune in. Well, they'll have to be at the SAU Board meeting, but to really pay close attention to how these projects are being laid out. It makes a lot of financial sense from my perspective over, you know, as far as tax impacts to the community. And as Roger will probably be able to get into more detail on Thursday, that our systems are in relatively decent shape to make us the 2.0, Sohegan 2.0 go out probably another five or so plus years. So it does make a lot of sense and I think it was a great job done and yeah, look forward to seeing, getting more details on Thursday.
And then I'll, I'll just, I'm sorry. I'll just add that while we will be giving the overall presentation to the whole SEU Board, members of the committee are planning to attend individual board meetings for both Amherst and Sohegan in November and December if necessary, so that we can have a more in-depth conversation with, with board members and provide any information in between meetings as well. So we can talk more about that, but as questions arise, I'm hoping that board members can provide them to us so we can be prepared for, for the future individual board meetings.
All right, moving along. Next topic. So math and math scores have been something that have been talked about before my time and certainly during my time here in this SAU. Also Thursday at the SAU Board meeting, I wanted to give a preview to this board. I'm going to be letting the SAU Board know of my intent to form a specialized committee that will eventually include our community members, school board members, and all of our stakeholders to do an in-depth analysis of our math instruction in our SAU and specifically figure out what needs to happen in order for us to produce top talent when it comes to math and to do an even better job than we have been doing. One of the, one of the things that our esteemed board member, Mr. Chen, has been focused on in recent years is our math scores and how they compare in the high stakes tests to those of our competitor school districts. And thanks to Dave and Steve Frady, who's a member of our community, the data that we've analyzed really shows that there are in fact some issues that we need to acknowledge and we need to dive headlong into to figure out how we can do a better job. I want to stop right there and say that I do not believe the job is with our high quality teachers that we have in the classroom. I think it is the structure, the curriculum, the resources that we have around math that are, that could be looked at and evaluated and redeployed when necessary in a more effective way. And so Thursday, I'm going to be rolling that out in a more detailed way. But given I thought this was going to be Dave's last board meeting, I really wanted to give a chance to give him a shout out regarding that plan because he's been a factor in having us really dive into that work. And so I just wanted him to receive that acknowledgement. And then finally, I did want to take a minute and thank Dave for his time as a board member. For those who don't know, Dave Chen has, has moved on and has moved out of state, which is a family move and a good move on his part. And I don't often get the chance to speak about board members, but I do want to take a minute and acknowledge what kind of board member Dave Chen is. Those who know Dave know that he cares deeply, although he really didn't have a direct vested interest in the school any longer. While his kids went through our school system, they went through long ago and have since moved out of state. And Dave's interest really was in making, in trying to make our schools something to be proud of in the state of New Hampshire. And I think he had a lot to do with some of the successes that have come down the pike for us. Dave, if, if you would watch from afar, you might think that Dave and I are at odds sometimes, but the, the truth is far from that. Dave and I had many, many conversations about lots of topics and found him to be someone who was fair, who was honest, who cared deeply and really had a sense of doing what's best for kids. And we're lucky to have a board member like Dave. So Dave, all the best and wish you well and hope you come back and visit us at some times. Thanks, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And thank you for saying those. I also had some remarks that I had that I wanted to talk about Dave as well. I will save mine towards the end of the meeting. So just in case, because I think a lot of it, as, as we'll see when I do read them, they're very similar to Adam's words. So no need to follow up exactly just now. Anyway, in the meantime, I do see a hand raised by Laura, so I will entertain a question from Laura. Go ahead.
Yes, I raised it earlier. Roger might be able to be some assistance from reviewing the manifest for the school. There were hundreds of thousands of HVAC expenses for the Sohegan 2.0. Where does that, how does that flow? Can you explain?
Yeah, so the, as I mentioned, we're doing the control upgrades now and that's what that, that work really is. And so it's, if, if you've talked to anyone from Sohegan, they'll tell you there are very cold classrooms, very hot classrooms, and it's, it's seemingly a little bit out of control. And that really is because of the control systems that no longer are functional, as well as many of the devices in classrooms are broken and have not been repaired. And so they're not able to either provide heat or in some cases even worse, stop providing heat when the room is hot enough. And so we're doing that work now that the board approved way back in May and then also tied into the reopening plan. But Roger, help me out. What did I miss?
No, that's, that's exactly it. You, you hit everything. A lot of it was the end of the year fund balance and the, some of it also is the included in the reopening plan. It's for the control system, as you mentioned, and also repair of the unit ventilators and equipment.
See a hand from Stephanie. Go ahead, Stephanie.
So I have a question. It's not necessarily something Adam has addressed, but I don't have a principal's report to go over and ask, but my, my question is about empower grading reporting transcripts. I know the seniors were just introduced to Empower this past week, last week, I believe it was. There aren't a ton of grades in there. They're getting in there, but they have transcript, they have, they have college applications going out. Something that was mentioned is that there is a new transcript that's coming out of Power School. That's something we haven't seen yet. There's concern of what grades are going to look like on the transcripts that are going to colleges. Can we get some answers on this? Because we have some very nervous parents out there right now.
Yeah, I think what I'll do is, Mike, if you could get some communication out this week, I think to Stephanie's point, it's urgent for these parents. Get some communication out this week about the process and what those transcripts, what changes are taking place because of Power School. I think that'd be really helpful. Does that work, Stephanie?
That, yeah, that would be helpful. And also I'm hoping that we can get an update on what's going on with Empower because I thought there was a discussion that we're looking at changing away from Empower. And I know teachers were supposed to be piloting software. Just kind of curious where we stand. Can we get an update on that information?
Yeah, so we are, what we're doing this year is a pilot of something called Teacher Ease and that we're, we're going to pilot this year. And if that goes well, that's what we would switch to next year. But I think we all agree that Empower is not the best tool, but we didn't want to switch to something else that could end up being even worse than what we currently have. So we're doing a pilot this year. But we didn't want to switch to something else that could end up being even worse than what we currently have. So we're doing a pilot this year with something called Teacher Ease and hope to switch to that next year.
Okay. And so just to follow up on the transcript issue, so with the seniors having grades or that are to be going out to colleges, are teachers able to override Empower if something doesn't look right to them and able to produce a grade that looks appropriate to them? Or how is that working?
Yes, they are. Yeah. And, and just to be clear, the transcript is still the same. The transcript hasn't changed, just the format with the new system that's producing it. So there's no new information or different information. It's just, it might look slightly different because a different system is producing the report. That's all.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Not that it makes anybody feel less concerned about it.
It's nerve wracking.
Hundred, hundred percent understand that for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, oh, Amy has a question. Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, so just to follow up on what Stephanie said, is, is everything all set for seniors? Because I know a lot of applications are due early November for early action and mid-November. So just with everything happening, just want to maybe get an overall update that all of our systems are go and that none of our students are going to be negatively impacted because of the situation that we're in with COVID and and, you know, other students being remote and making sure that grades are appropriately allocated and, and all that. So just sort of an overall update, because it's a really important time for seniors especially.
Yeah, Mike, I know this, you're new to us, but this isn't your first opportunity to, to go through the process with our seniors. I think it would be really helpful later this week to have a pretty in-depth conversation or communication from you about that process. And I know Karen Shenanis will be a big part of it as well, but I think they, our senior parents need an update. I just saw something cross my inbox earlier, earlier today about, I didn't even have the chance to send to you, Mike, but I think that, that really needs to happen this week, just to ease our parents' mind.
Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
No, we can do that. I'll get, I'll get going on that.
Great. Before I get to Laura's question, I see that Steve Coughlin joined us. Welcome, Steve. Could you just state whether or not you are where you are and whether or not you are alone in the room that you are in?
I am alone, although briefly I was beside myself.
And where are you?
I am at home.
Okay, thank you. All right, Laura, you have another question?
Yes, while we're talking about Empower, I would say last year, school year, that the correlation between the competencies and how the assessments went into the competencies and went into the state standards, there was a disconnect in the program. And Christine said she had all the answers, it just wasn't available to parents. I want to know, it will, the connection be available to parents now? And what progress has been made?
Is that something that, that we are prepared by, we, I mean, Adam and his team are prepared to answer this right now? Or is it something you'd rather I get back to Laura on?
Yeah, if we could get back to you, just because I'm not following exactly, I just have a feeling that maybe if you and Christine had a conversation that might clarify things. That's all right.
This guy, work for you, Laura?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, the first reading of the policies. Hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at those policies. Anybody have any? Well, I don't want to say questions or concerns at this point, although I do. I do want to obviously allow people, but to ask those questions, however, I think best course of action is if there are particular questions around, you know, probably RSA related items, maybe that should go directly to the policy committee and have them research those questions. You can certainly ask the question, but then now, but then the research will have to be done offline. So does anybody have any questions or concerns on any of these policies that we're looking at for the first reading?
Mr. Chair, we are removing policy DID from the list. It was all one big packet, but that, that one has already been sent back for revision. So that's, that should not be included this, tonight.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, I don't know whose hand was up first, but I see Stephanie and Laura. So we'll go with Stephanie first.
Okay, the one policy I want to address is GCEB, the administrative staff recruiting. And I go back to when we were talking about, when I discussed this at the SAU meeting and I don't understand why we need to change this policy to, and now I just feel that the superintendent can come with his job description, he can come with a plan, but there's nothing that says he has to include anybody. There's nothing that says that we can object to his plan. There is nothing that I just don't understand why we have to change this. And what is wrong other than to clarify the one that was there where there was a little confusion over one of the words being used? I'd like to go back to say that there are, there are certain positions that we, we as a school board are also included in on the process.
Okay, can you restate what that policy is again?
Geez, yeah, it's page 104 in the packet. It's GCEB, administrative staff recruiting.
Okay, I would ask somebody who's on a policy committee, and I think we have two on our board that are on that committee to, if they can come up with a relatively easy or quick answer at the moment, if it requires additional research, as I mentioned, then that's something we should put off till the following meeting potentially. So Laura, you're on the policy committee, is that right?
Yes, I believe Dave is trying to get into the meeting.
So I, I can say something about the, the history of this. We
Thank you.
Dave was unhappy with the process that we used for the, for the search and hiring of Mike, the new principal. And so we took the policy that we had and went back to the policy committee and tried to find a compromise between the superintendent's desire to, to have control over the hiring process as, as the law allows and also give the board input into the hiring process as the board desires. And in roughly July timeframe, I think we hashed out this compromise language, which at the time Dave agreed met his needs. He may not believe that now, but he, he's, he, at the time, we thought, oh, thank God, we've got something that, that compromises between the superintendent's deeds and, and Dave's needs and gives us a policy to go forward with. The, the reality is the superintendent has to notify the board of what's going on. And a superintendent tells the board, I'm going to do this, and the board says, no, we don't like that. It's not going to be a good relationship if the superintendent continues on in the face of the board's opposition to a process. So this policy allows for debate and discussion if, if the board does not like the process the superintendent proposes for, for doing hiring.
But there's nothing that says that the school board can object to the process. So I look at this as a long-term policy. I'm not looking at it as a one or two-year policy. I'm looking at the long term. So whether Adam's here or some other superintendent is here, I'm looking at the next person could come in and say, oh, look, I can come in, I can tell you what I'm doing, but I'm still going to go do whatever it is anyway. And there's nothing that says the school board can say, hold on, timeout, I object to your process. I really would like you to include other people in it. And the only thing that they're going to do is after he tells us what the job description is, is they're going to come back and say, here's my person. We still don't learn about this person. We don't learn who they are, and that can make a big difference in our community.
So the reality, there was a reality is if the superintendent says, I'm going to do this process, and, and, and the board says, we don't like the process, the superintendent is not going to continue with that process or will not last long as a superintendent. Those are
That, well, that's the thing, and we hate to get that point, right?
But the spirit of all
The school board can't say no to his process in here.
Yes, the, 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 the school board can't say no. That's true. But they can get so mad as to make his or her life untenable going forward if, if they decide to die on that hill. It's all a question of what hill do you want to die on?
Yeah.
Let me just say, but, but the other thought I, I have, which is forever, literally forever in the Sohegan School District, with the superintendents, all of the superintendents, there's been a, a spirit of discussion and compromise to get to something that's agreeable to all parties. So that this policy kind of relies on that tradition, if you will. But the district's going to be in bigger trouble than this if we don't continue with that spirit going forward.
Correct. And it all depends on who we've hired. Right now, we feel we, you know, we trust the person that's in there now, but you know, who knows how long, if he's here five years from now, we could still be there, but it could be somebody else and then they could read this and say eh.
And, and board members have that same guarantee of continuity that the superintendent has. Who knows if Ayes will be here tomorrow. Hey, where's Dave?
Sorry, that's my, that's what I want to say. It's my piece. I'm not a fan of this one.
I, I agree with Stephanie. And the superintendent brought forward this policy and has promoted it. And it gives him more power than state law. And I just feel as a cooperative district, our, our way to hold the superintendent accountable is through our policies as a district of the Sohegan. And that we should be looking out for who our administrators are and take an active interest in this. And it shouldn't be whether the superintendent decides to include us in the process or not. I feel like it's implied that it helps cultivate the culture of the school. That it's very important.
Okay, so does this need to get, go back to the policy committee for another rewrite?
I, I would say no, because it's been through the policy committee and Laura made her, her points of view known there. And this is what came out. Now the question is, is the Sohegan School Board going to adopt it or not as it is, or is it going to craft its own to be different?
And this is standard throughout the SAU currently, right?
I don't know where the other two districts are in adopting it, but they, everyone else was in agreement on it at the policy committee.
Yeah, that's what I meant. It's, it's being forwarded to all, all three boards.
Looks like global warming has caused flooding in Dave's area.
In any case, so, well, I'm unsure of where we are then with this.
Is there a way to just add that the board approves the process the superintendent will select to nominate, to, to interview candidates and stuff? Is there, if we can use, add the word approve in there, the school board will approve the process? I think I would feel better.
That, that's for Adam to say. He was, he had some strong opinions about what this should and shouldn't say, and I forget if they included that option or not.
Adam, would you like to jump in? Or if not, that's okay.
No, I'd be happy to. I think I made, had this conversation a couple of times at the policy committee and then at the SAU board meeting when we discussed it as well, but state law is crystal clear. Only one person can choose teachers to be hired. Only one person can choose principals to be hired. Only one person can choose anybody but the superintendent and it's, and an SAU to be hired, and that's me. State law makes it very clear that I am the only person that has the authority to nominate anyone to a school board to be hired. If they hold a teaching certification or an administrative certification. The check and balances, the board is the only person who can approve that nomination, meaning I can't finish the process of hiring anybody. I can only nominate and the board can either say yes or no to the person that I bring forward. And state law has been that way for a very long time. And the purpose of that is to shield potential educators from what could be politically divisive conversations or the wrong person being hired for the right reasons or the right person being hired for the wrong reasons. In short, a board hires a superintendent to run the day-to-day operations of the school. And if you cannot trust that person to make the right hiring decisions, you should find a different superintendent. It's very clear. You can talk to the NHSBA attorneys or any school attorney in the state and they'll make those, that same case clear. In most districts, there is no policy that even refers to this, these types of hiring practices. It's assumed and well-known that the superintendent makes those decisions. In other states, there's even less authority for the board. In Massachusetts, for example, the board doesn't approve any hires. The superintendent does the whole thing from start to finish. In this process, point as well, that they felt strongly there should be more input at the board level into the process. And so although state law does not require that, I suggested this policy revision so that if nothing else, the board would be aware of the, the process that I or Dr. Next Gal or Dr. Next Guy would use to make their selections. And this is one of the very few things that I feel so strongly about that I do believe it's of critical importance that the superintendent should pick principals, the superintendent should pick teachers. And in doing so, he or she should use, the community members should use teachers in the process, parents, school board members, everybody in that process. And if, if he or she didn't, they would not last long as a superintendent. But at the end of the day, it ought to be the, the superintendent's decision on the process. And I, and that's, that's my pitch. So I made that, that offer as a compromised position to have this policy continue and for the board to be made aware of the process at the beginning, as opposed to this process with our current principal, where some board members felt they were not included enough in the process from the beginning. Having heard that, I am more than willing to make that compromise. I'm not comfortable having the board approve the process. But thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Adam. So I am also in agreement with what you're saying. You know, you are much, you and whoever you decide to put in that, in that process, I think is going to be much more able to find the right person and to define what the right process is. You know, you're an educator and, you know, typically the rest of us are not. So you are are definitely more equipped in that area than the rest of us. And again, as stated multiple times, if we're not happy with superintendent is performing, then we can make a change. So I'd say let's move this on to a second reading. I think there has been compromise already reached at the policy level. And, you know, this does say that he will share or the superintendent will notify us of the opening and the process. So even if we don't agree with the process, it doesn't allow us to say, no, this is not a good process. You know, again, the superintendent is solely responsible for hiring these positions. And if we don't like the positions that he's hiring or the people he's oriented to those positions and the job that he's doing, then we find a new superintendent. And if we don't like the positions that he's hiring or the people he's oriented those positions and the job that he's doing, then we find a new superintendent. So I'd say we move this forward.
And as a cooperative school district, we don't have that right. We are part of a cooperative group of other districts. Having a policy that the board is involved in the principal is what helps distinguish us as, as a district. And certainly I would think that a position as important as the principal would be the board would, uh, certainly their opinions would be important.
Sure. I mean, I'm not saying they're not unimportant. I'm saying that the superintendent, just as it states, will determine the process. He'll let us know what the process is. And as Adam's already stated, he will include board members and community members and others. So if there's, you know, people with strong opinions who want to be on the, in those selection committees, then, um, that person can let the superintendent know when those positions, when he needs to hire a position. And perhaps they'll be on that, on that selection committee. So, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if there's an RSA that you're referring to. I'd like to know what that is. About cooperative school districts, but we are one district, not multiple districts. And, um, you know, made up of two towns. That's all.
No, no, we are part of a district of where the Sohegan Cooperative District, there's the Amherst and the Mount Vernon. I'm talking about Sohegan as a district, not the, two towns.
Okay.
And the fact that SAU 39 hires the superintendent. But this, um, my opposition to this policy is no reflection on Mike Berry. I am very pleased with our principal and I want to make that very clear. I just think it's, um, I think it's important that the board play an important role into the school. And when you don't have checks and balances, the school will decline in my, in the history of. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Amy, I have a question because then we, uh, I think we need to move on here.
Yep. Just a clarification that is, is the school board's responsibility to approve or not approve the superintendent's recommendation as a check and balance. Just want to make that clarification.
Right. But in the case of Mike Berry, he was presented at the 11th hour where we wouldn't have had, we would have had an interim principal for the next year. So at that point, we pretty much, he was presented at a point that in order for us to even have a principal. But it's not Mike Berry. I, I don't mean to make this about that. And it's not even about Adam Steele. It's about the principle of the superintendent's versus the school board.
Yeah, I was just making a clarification on the policy. I wasn't getting into anything specific.
Okay. So any other questions on any other policies?
I have questions.
On other policies?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, grading and reporting, IKE.
What, uh, page is that referenced on?
Excuse me?
What page is that referenced on, please?
Ninety-seven.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, and your concern?
My concern is that, um, or you know, as I stated earlier, the direct connection between assignments, competencies and the state standards haven't been disclosed to parents. The promotional pathways as part of men mastery is not included in this policy, which is part of state law.
Okay, was this not discussed during the policy committee meetings?
Yes, it was discussed.
Okay, and?
Well, because um, the high schools, you might be aware, is different than the other schools when it comes to, uh, providing an education and how it affects students and how this is, needs to be represented for further higher education.
Okay, and is there a reason why that, uh, any Sohegan specific items, um, that you're referring to are not on in this policy?
Well, it does not, um, it does not include the promoting students when they have achieved mastery, which is a state law, and it's not included in this policy.
Okay, and Steve, is there a particular reason why it wasn't included to your knowledge?
Yes, and I'm going to rely on, on Christine's encyclopedic memory here, but there is another policy that addresses promotions, that this isn't the one for promotions.
Correct. This is grading and reporting, not promotion. I can't remember. Sorry. Play with the dog. I apologize. I can't recall, um, but I could probably find, uh, the policy pretty quickly, but there is another promotion policy.
Yeah, it, it exists. It's, it's on the website. Just no one remembers the, the magic letters.
Okay, so Laura's concerns are addressed in this other policy?
I don't know. I, I, um, I would have to read the policy and then hear more about her concerns. But the, the concern that it doesn't exist is certainly addressed by the existence of the policy.
Okay, so there is another policy. So I think, uh, we should find out, not right now, if it's not part of this packet, but let's find out what that other policy is. Report back, uh, to the board on what that is, so the board can review it. And if this needs to go, go back as a result, uh, to the policy committee, we can, we can make that determination at the next meeting.
Pam, there is a policy IKE promotion retention of students. It's very short. As a superintendent, building principals shall develop rules for promotion retention of students and the rules shall be approved above the board. There's a student handbook.
Yeah, there's a different policy Steve and I are referring to. I would have to, I am looking quickly. I don't know that I'll find it, um, but there is another one.
Okay.
Yeah, we did talk about this at SAU because it was brought up and, um, I believe we discussed the other promotional policy that it was in existence.
Okay, well, let's, uh, do some research, uh, find out exactly what those policies are. Send that out to, um, the board. If I could ask Adam and his team to, and get those out to, uh, the board. And we'll review. And if we feel like we need to send this back to the policy committee, um, at our next meeting, then we can do that at that point. Again, this is just the first reading. Okay, anybody else have any other policies? Uh, I'd see Laura's hand again. I'm going to ask if anybody else has one before I go back to Laura. Anybody else? No? Okay, Laura, go ahead.
Uh, I have a concern with GBGA staff health. It's an optional policy. To begin with, the use of inimical. It's a broad and ambiguous term. It has two meanings, meaning to obstruct or harm, or then unfriendly or hostile. I felt like there'd be a better term used if we use this policy. And number two, um, the law doesn't authorize mental health evaluations at the superintendent's discretion. It, um, of the employees, the law only says medically capable. And I feel that we're in, it would not be prudent to include that and it, that it, if you're concerned about the medical, medically capable, that's one thing.
Okay, was this discussed at the policy committee?
It was.
But it's our choice as a board. We're the one adopting the policy.
I understand. I'm, I'm not questioning that. I'm just asking if it was discussed and what those discussions were about. And if they are anything that, you know, that we can, again, the most, these policies are, we're trying to standardize across all the districts. If there's specific ones in here for, um, that we need to make specific to the high school, um, then we can do that, or we can add specific language to the policy that only pertains to the high school. But I want to know just, you know, if these topics that you're bringing up, Laura, were discussed previously at the policy committee, which is where they should be discussed. So we're actually solving the problems ahead of time instead of during readings like this.
I did bring these concerns up at the policy committee. I also had an attorney look at this particular, um, optional policy. And they agreed with me and I even brought that up.
Okay.
You know, the policy committee is just school board members and the superintendent.
Uh, and the, I think the, the, the kind of argument was this is the language from the school board association. So we trust, rest of the policy committee trusted that this was, um, illegal, essentially. It was, so this is, this is the recommended language.
Yeah, so the, the answer, yeah, go ahead, Steve, sorry.
The school board association, which they always have, they're, it comes from, from their attorney, so. But we know, just in Laura's defense, we know attorneys love to argue with each other. So it's not surprising. We found an attorney somewhere that disagreed with this language.
Sure, no. Attorneys all have opinions. Okay, and, uh, so this was acceptable by the rest of the policy committee? Or were there other, other detractors as well?
I believe this was, uh, I think everybody else approved of this.
Yeah, I think the concern that, um, Laura is having, and I can, I can understand what the concern is coming from is evaluating someone's mental health from afar to say you need to go get a, a mental health exam is something that is very touchy and very, you gotta be careful of. And I think that's where the concern lies. Medical exam is one thing. Um, a mental health exam is potentially another because you can point at anybody and say, I think you have a mental health issue and you need to go get evaluated and use it. And I think that's where the concern is.
Yeah, um, I can understand that. Uh, it's the same point though, as I'm reading through this again. You know, one of the lines or sentences rather in section two, you know, the cost of such examination will be borne by the district. So I think that, um, the superintendent would not indiscriminately be sending people out for tests, knowing that there's a cost that we would have to incur. It's probably not budgeted, so. Or at least not budgeted for many, so.
Many times, but I think when you're considering some, sending someone for a mental health exam, you're not concerned the cost, you're more concerned for the person.
Of course.
You would hope that's the reason that you're sending them and not because you disagree in some other way.
I don't know. I, I, I completely agree with what you're saying in, in that instance. I'm just saying, I don't think the superintendent would indiscriminately be sending people. It's like, oh, I think you're wacky, so you need to go get a, a, a mental health checkup. Um, you know, when that would cost, you know, a few hundred bucks to the district that, um, or to the SAU that may, which we may not have. So that's.
Can I just point out the construction of that sentence? Uh, it talks about requesting a medical examination, which I assume everyone would agree means an examination by a licensed physician. For either of two reasons, either physical or mental health. I, I suspect the way this would work in practice is the employee would be shuffled off to a general practitioner for evaluation because of a set of symptoms or behaviors. And, uh, they may be physical impairments of some kind or mental impairments of some kind. That's not ours to diagnose. That's for the position to hear what the, uh, what the cause for concern was, and then to evaluate the employee to see if they are capable of fulfilling the job or not. That may involve a referral to a, um, a psychological or psychiatric specialist. But, um, I'm sure the initial triage is going to be done more by a general practitioner than a, a specialist because we started the diagnosis and directed the employee down a particular path.
That makes sense.
In other words, the doctor gets to call it, whether it's physical or mental, not us.
Well, back to the original educational title 15. It says, "A written recommendation from the examining physician shall indicate that the employee is medically capable of performing his designated assignment." I just feel that this particular policy, which is optional, goes beyond that. Beyond, it's not supported by law and it's something, it's not a position I think we should be putting, uh, the SAU in.
Again, um, if this was already gone over at the, uh, SAU level, um, there's probably enough folks that believe we should have it, so, um, you know, you can certainly vote against it if you want. Uh, when it comes down to the second reading, I think for now it should stay in. If you want to have more discussion at the SAU level, you know, you can bring it up if there's, if there are, um, policy discussions at that point. Any other questions at this point?
I just wanted to remind everyone, you know, seven of us have been elected to represent the high school and all the policies that are at the high school. The other people of the SAU board are representing other boards. They were elected to represent other boards. They're legally responsible for other boards. We are responsible for the high school. So the committee, the policy committee is not responsible, the SAU 39 board members, if they weren't elected to represent the high school. I, I just want to make that clear. I feel strongly. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that, Laura. We can, well, we have to pass this at the board level anyway, so we will vote at it, uh, at the second reading, if this is, uh, still on at that point. Okay. We all set then with, uh, policies at this point? Seeing no other hands, let's, uh, move on. Yeah, that's all. I didn't see your hand, Laura. Yeah, so go ahead. Last, last thing, we need to move on, okay?
Okay, I have two other policies and one is the INGAA therapy dogs, which I didn't think with COVID that this was good timing for the high school. My other policy was J I C D, student discipline.
Okay.
And, uh, section F says that the policies here, instead of where it says the board can be a subcommittee of the board, and I'd like to strike that particular statement. I think it should be the board.
Okay. Then, did you bring that up then, policy committee?
No, when reading the 147 pages for this. meeting, I just ran across it.
No, I would suggest then that you bring it back to your next policy committee meeting and, and suggest that revision.
Can I ask when the next policy committee meeting is versus when we're going to vote on these on the second, on our next reading? Is there a policy meeting before it?
No, so the policy committee is not set to meet until next spring when we go through the next batch of policies. So I think what, if I'm understanding Pim correctly, I think he's saying this policy is probably going to move forward, but it can always be revised like any other policy can be revised.
Sure, that sounds good.
Well, and just to clarify, so that, that section, if I may, Mr. Chair, is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the reason why sometimes a subcommittee of the board is necessary for expulsion hearings or for long-term suspension hearings is more often than not, a board member or several board members might have a conflict with the particular case being brought forward. And if the policy requires a quorum of the board and the quorum of the board can't sit because of a conflict, that creates an issue that can't easily be overcome. And so I think that's why it says that the board, and only the board can decide whether to have a subcommittee or the entire board sit for those, those expulsion and long-term suspension hearings. But I think the reason for that is to ensure that there's always board representation in those hearings because of conflicts.
And if I may, Pim, at a recent event, which was not a student disciplinary hearing per se, the, we had a hard time pulling together a quorum of the board to meet in the timeframe required for the, for the hearing. A combination of board member availability and necessary recusals made it touch and go whether we would have a quorum or not. So if, if it was possible to appoint a subcommittee of, let's say, three board members who we knew would be there and did not have conflicts of interest, that would make it much easier to meet the timelines and act on these issues in a timely manner. But again, as Adam pointed out, his language says, the board as a whole first has to agree to appoint that subcommittee and allow it to act. So it's not something that happens by accident.
Yeah, okay. I think that makes perfect sense and, and I think that should satisfy what Laura is looking for, especially since it starts with the board and then would move to a subcommittee only if the board allows that, to your point. All right, so let's move that on to the second reading as well. Okay.
Can I, can I go back to Laura's question about the IMGAA, the therapy dog policy? There was discussion at the SAU board of whether we really wanted to include this in, in this year's policy packet. I think at the high school level, we kind of had that conversation. Since we're talking about our first reading here and moving on to the second reading, do we want to continue considering this therapy dog policy? Or do we want to say, let's hold off until next year? Because right now, is it really the right time to put this in when we have so much going on in the school as it is with COVID? Can we pull that out of the packet?
Go ahead, Steve.
If I may, so the policy is merely enabling. Given all the work that went into writing this policy, I'd rather pass it in this round. And then if, if a majority of the board feels it's not the time, we can turn around right after we pass it and have a motion telling the principal, don't do it this year.
Yeah, I think we did talk about that actually last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that makes sense and that, I would take that to say that we could utilize that for any particular policy where, where it's being newly implemented and that there is some kind of impact that we may anticipate as a result of current conditions.
This policy was drafted by a third party promoting therapy dogs. It's not from the New Hampshire School Board Association. I'm not even sure it's been through legal review by our district. Just FYI.
Okay.
Yeah, it went through community council and was passed by community council. That's how it came to us.
If I remember correctly, this is the policy that another district adopted to implement therapy dogs. And they've been using it effectively at least two years, maybe more, I don't know. How, not to give it away, but however long Anappel has been here, at least that long they've been using it.
And for the record, our legal counsel did review this policy.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Adam and Steve, for the background there. All right. Good. All right, that's it on first reading of the policies. Once, twice, let's move on. All right, one thing that I neglected and seeing Delaney on here, first of all, I say, hi, Delaney. Thanks for attending our board meetings again. And I know that you are the community council rep again this year. Was there anything specifically that you wanted to talk about from a community council perspective? Before we move into the proposed budget, which we are all itching to get to.
So, community council has had kind of a slow start with our hybrid model, so we haven't gotten to any proposals. I do know that there is one coming to executive next week. So at the next board meeting, I'll have more to talk about with that. But I just thought I'd say a couple things about what I plan to do this year, kind of building off what I did last year. I know that in a meeting sometime this spring, there were some concerns about student, like full student input on, at the school board from what I report out from community council. So this year I plan on taking notes at the community council meetings. And then when I tell you guys about the specific proposal, I can give reasons people are opposing or supporting the proposal. So you guys know, like, real-time student input on what the students are feeling or how the students are feeling about specific proposals. And then I just thought I could ask you guys if you have anything that you guys want from me this year that I didn't do last year because it was my first year. So if you, I don't know if there is anything, but feel free to just let me know.
Yeah, and I, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, it's okay, Amy. Since you're, since you're the rep on the council, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say Delaney was voted in today as the board liaison. So congratulations to her. And I, for one, am really excited to have her back this year. She had, you know, a great year last year and we can build on that. And, you know, we've done a little bit of talking about how we can improve communications between the board and community council. And I like Delaney's idea of being able to provide more information. And I'm thinking that we can even hopefully provide some information in the packet ahead of time. So since community council meets weekly, we might be able to get some information in so board members can read about proposals ahead of time. So those are some things that Delaney and I are going to be working on this year. So very excited to have her and, yeah, and if there's other suggestions for her and, and me, then, you know, we definitely would love to, to hear them.
Great. Well, thank you both for that. And Delaney, I also welcome you back. For some reason, I thought that you were already the board liaison for this current academic year. So if I assume that incorrectly initially, I apologize. But again, thanks, or congratulate, congratulations, I should say.
No worries. Thank you.
And yeah, we look forward to increasing our communications with the community council. And that should be, you know, really good moving forward, especially as we talked about in the past about aligning our topics. So we know, you know, kind of the things that you guys are addressing and you know what the things that we're addressing. Okay, so thanks for that. Any other committee reports real quick that anybody has? We already talked about the JFAC committee, talked about policies ad nauseam. Anything else? Anybody wants to add?
Pim?
Laura, yeah?
I attended the Hitler Law, Educational Law Conference, and they had some interesting handouts, including they had one presentation on Learn Everywhere that was newly passed in New Hampshire. And I'll forward the information to the board that was passed out about Learn Everywhere, where students can, once, people get accredited by the state, and then it's, the school has to accept up to a third of the graduating requirements for Learn Everywhere. But right now it's still beginning and the accreditation process is just in the beginning phases, but it will be affecting how we accept credits towards graduation.
Okay, great, yeah, that'd be interesting to look at. So if you could forward that, that'd be, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the budget presentation. I will turn it over to Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So everyone's favorite time of the year is the six or seven months that we talk about our school budgets. And that process kicks off tonight for Sohegan. Tonight is a preview of the budget to outline our priorities in the superintendent's proposed budget and starts the process that eventually ends with our voters weighing in at the deliberative session in February and ultimately approving or not approving what we put on the ballot in March. So right from the start, we anticipate having the budget on the ballot this year as we always do, as well as a contribution to the capital reserve fund for long-term maintenance. In addition to that, based on the board's decisions and prerogative, we may have another warrant article for the science labs and those other things, locker rooms and the secure entrance that we talked about before. But that's up to the board's discretion. I should say from the beginning that I am assuming for, during the budgeting process, a normal school year next year. And that is a big assumption at this point. And it may be that as we go down this, this pathway a little bit, that we decide that we need to include some contingency funds for COVID-19 and what those impacts may be. But given that we're only in our eighth or ninth week of the school year and we have a couple of months to see how things play out, I thought it necessary for now just to bring forward with a budget that reflected and anticipated return to our normal enrollment status and a return to normal schooling status next year. So with that, I have a memo that I sent out to the board members. We're going to provide it to the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee as well and post on our website. It walks through our proposed budget for this evening. In fact, maybe I'll just, let me see if I can pull it up on the screen here and share with the public so they can follow along. Just give me one second. All right. So in this proposed budget, you'll note that the total budget is up just under a million dollars. But the key there is that there's only a difference of $123,000 between the default budget and the proposed budget. And as a reminder, the default budget is all of the things that we essentially have little to no control over. And I want to spend some time going through that in just a minute. But first, our priorities. As I mentioned earlier, we need to focus on our long-term plan for facilities and what's coming down the pike this Thursday from the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. Beyond that, two key focuses for us. One is that focus on math I mentioned before. Although I don't think there will be anything budgetary related to our math, our math work for next year. There may be in future years, but nothing budget-wise for that, but it remains a high priority. The next is a reorganization of the leadership team at Sohegan High School to better support teacher instructional practice. Much more to come on that later as we get more involved in this budget. Other things that will have a significant impact on our budget that are outside of our control. We have a transportation, our RFP, that's currently out. We're waiting to get proposals in the next couple of weeks. That's for our regular bus transportation service. And that might have a budget impact up or down depending on the proposals that we receive. But we don't have those back quite yet. The New Hampshire retirement system is funded by deductions from employees' paychecks and also an employer contribution, much like social, social security at the federal level. Unlike social security, the rates that employers pay are reset and adjusted every two years. And next year will be the first year of the new rates, which are two to three percentage points higher. And so depending on the type of employee we have, we have to play, pay 200 to 300 basis points higher for all of the salary. And that's a, that's a significant expense for us. Our medical insurance guaranteed maximum rates were received at 6.3%. And we have some other things that we'll include that I'm going to highlight here in a second. So here's our breakdown of how we go from our current budget to our default budget and then our proposed budget. So last year's, everything that was passed on the warrant article, on the warrant last year is about $18.8 million. The New Hampshire retirement rate increase cost us an additional $318,000. The second year of the PPC agreement adds $364,000 to the default budget. Special education expenses, including an additional special education teacher and paraprofessional for students that we already have in, in our school and that we know about, add about $235,000. Then as we go down through, there's some, some smaller things there, including removal of bond principal and interest, a reduction of $159,000. All told, the default budget is an increase of about $753,000 from last year's warrants. Then from the default to the proposed, really it's about facilities and facilities-related expenditures. Those, the inclusion of the UV light robots for disinfection and other facility-related expenses are about $163,000. And the total of all the changes from the default to the proposed is only $123,000. So you see we've made cuts in other places in our budget to get to our proposed budget of $19.6 million. Moving down through this document, we've included in here our long-term capital maintenance plan that we've discussed at length in the past and the upcoming contributions to that. This assumes that we're not doing any major facilities projects in the near future. And so as we go through the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee process, we might find that there are savings here from our long-term maintenance plan. Because if we're replacing or refurbishing or renovating things, then certainly we don't need to, those things will come off the list of what needs to be replaced. But that 10-year project plan is included in here. Also, we've put together a five-year curriculum review and adoption schedule that's available for the public and the board to review. The purpose of this document is to show when we're going to be evaluating our math curriculum, our social studies curriculum, our world language curriculum, et cetera, so that we can plan for when there might be expenditures associated with that. For example, if we studied our social studies curriculum in our SAU, we might find that we need to buy new resources or new textbooks. And so we'll have that in that five-year curriculum review cycle for us to, to be prepared for. Included in here for the first time is we broke down our staffing levels in detail in every department and every subcategory, first starting with professional staff. You'll note the only differences are the reduction of the family and consumer sciences halftime teacher and the increase in special education, the teacher from 11 to 12 at Sohegan High School. Moving on, we have all of our support and administrative staff listed here as well. And again, you'll note that increase in paraeducators from 23 budgeted to 24 next year. Yes, some contracts are this level of precision for FTEs. So we'll go from 47.563 full-time equivalents to 48.563 next year with our proposed budget. So that really is the, all of our presentation for this evening with the budget. We know that we will go through a significant review process with our Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee starting tomorrow with a joint meeting that the board is invited to along with the Advisory Finance Committee. And we'll go through all of those subcommittee meetings to allow the board and the public to be well-informed in the process. And we'll go through all of those subcommittee meetings to allow the board and the public to be well-informed in the process. Uh, but I thought I'd stop there and see if there's any initial questions for the board uh given this overview.
Adam, can you just explain uh in the budget reconciliation, increase in grant fund? I know it's a small dollar, but what does that exactly mean? What grant fund and?
Yes, so uh, um, let me go right to that spot. So you see this um uh increase in grant fund. So uh, our our budget is made up of three parts, the general fund, the school nutrition services fund and the grants fund. Um, the, the last two, the school nutrition services and the grants fund are self-funded, meaning they don't impact taxes. However, we still have to budget on a gross basis, meaning if we anticipate receiving more money in grants next year, we also have to budget to spend more money in grants next year. And so the impact is the budget goes up and by that ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, but the tax impact does not change uh to our taxpayers. And so we had to include that just for an accounting, uh, really it's for accounting purposes there.
Is there any specific grant work? Uh, is it Title One, Title Two, Special Ed? Just curious. We'll get to the details later, but.
I don't know offhand, I I would have to guess it's probably IDEA because that fluctuates, um, but I don't know offhand. If anyone else, Christine or Meg, if you know offhand or Michelle, jump right in.
I'm not sure offhand.
Okay, no problem.
Um, I see uh Steve raised his hand and then Laura has her um electronic hand up, but I'll, I saw Steve's first, so I'll see if uh Steve still has his question.
Uh, yeah, so um, there's this wonderful online sheet somewhere, right?
Yes, so Michelle, when will that uh link to the Google document that has an unbelievable amount of information be shared with the board and the public?
We can share that this evening or uh tomorrow evening in the meeting, whichever works better for folks. Tomorrow's meeting is to walk through the logistics of the file, um, how to submit questions using the question submission form and just how to kind of maneuver through the document and where to find information.
Uh, I'd like to suggest then that if you could share it uh tonight, that'd be great, because that way people can start to look at it and get somewhat familiar with, you know, they may not know where everything is, but then um, but then tomorrow it may make it a little easier to navigate.
Happy to do so.
Thank you. Um, Laura, you have a question?
Um, yes, I'd like copies of the presentation available and uh, I'd like a a discussion of the master schedule. I thought it would be on the agenda since it was emailed to all the board members between um, after the last meeting, I was hoping we could have a discussion of it, but it's not on the agenda, so I can wait, but I thought that was important.
Okay, thank you. Uh, George, you have a question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair, thanks. Um, Adam, can you pull up uh the slide with the budget numbers real quick for a minute? If you don't mind?
No problem. The, the reconciliation?
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure I have my numbers correct, because it looked like I was off by ten grand. So I'm plus Yeah, I'm coming up with, I must be missing something, it must be reconciling item, because when I look at the twenty-one operating budget of eighteen, seven seventy-six, five oh nine, and I add in the changes, seven fifty-two, five forty-eight, I come up with nineteen, five-two-nine, oh, five-seven.
All right, we'll double-check that and uh it's probably a scribner's error on my part, sorry about that.
It's quite all right, I'm right in the middle, budgets on my end and for some line out at me, so, so thank you.
All right, um, Laura, do you have another question? Laura, no. Um, Stephanie, how about you? Do you have a question? I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I, so tomorrow is, Michelle, are you well-versed in uh, the assumptions behind the budget, so like the master schedule, what classes are being offered and things like that? And how often? So that, because that's really part of what we need to look at when we're looking at staffing and all that stuff. So I don't know if you have all that info and comfortable with it, or does that's what we do now? I know we need to get.
The master schedule would really be more Mike to speak to that.
Okay, because I think that's an important part of looking at the budget as well.
Yeah, we, we agree and um in the curriculum subcommittee in particular, Mike will speak to that, but we can also discuss it at the board level for sure, because uh, as you know, that's the, the thing that drives a budget more than anything is number of courses we offer and then thus the number of teachers we need and how many teachers we need to pay for, so.
And if we're offering it to their ninth and tenth graders next year.
Mm-hmm, indeed.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Laura, your hand back up again?
Yes, can you put on the teachers again for what they're the slide with the teachers?
Sure, and I did email so the, this whole thing to the board ear- earlier today, did you guys not receive it?
I did not.
Um.
I received it, I did, I did, but it was like almost at five-thirty or something like that, I came through.
Really, it was sent about one this afternoon, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I got it earlier.
I, I, I received it as well, Adam.
Okay.
And I did not.
I was noticing the art teachers, um, they have very few students this year, and yet we have two full-time art teachers and then in the music and band we have one and one-third that, that have as many students.
Yeah, it's certainly something uh we should raise in the curriculum subcommittee and review that as part of the master schedule review for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions uh at this point? And I know we all have our um subcommittee breakouts uh over the next few weeks. And so uh, please be diligent about your questions at that time. Uh, make sure that uh, you know, any of these things that even that you're hearing from other board members, um, you know, and, and hopefully everybody during tomorrow's walkthrough with Michelle, uh, we get an opportunity to look at the, the various areas. Uh, again, each, we have a board member for each critical area, so if you have specific questions, maybe forward it to that rep for that area if uh it is outside of your own area and if something that you are keenly interested in, and then that the representative can make sure that your question gets uh answered. Okay, that way we're not inundating multiple people with multiple questions. Thank you for that. All right, um, anything else, Adam, uh, or is that uh you all set with uh this presentation at this point?
All set, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to, uh, you know, I write the memo and do the presentation, but I didn't do most of the work, and so thanks to uh Michelle, Mike, all of his team and and all the people at the SAU, Christine, Meg, um, Amina, who, who spent hours and hours uh to get to this point. Um, so while the presentation doesn't need to be as, quite as in-depth, it doesn't uh reflect on the amount of work that went into this, so uh, nice job, everybody.
Great, thank you for all of that, to all those folks as well. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, we have discussion on the board seat vacancy due to Mr. Chen's departure from the Amherst and um Sohegan area uh out to Colorado, and I see he's joining us uh currently from Hawaii, so that's great. Anyway, that's a joke, anyway, um, so uh we're, uh, I guess, Adam, is that something that you want to lead a discussion in? I'm not really sure if we need to, if there's anything in particular that we needed to talk about at this point um on that.
Uh, yeah, I can set that up uh for sure. So um, according to uh, there's a statute, um, six seventy-one thirty-three says that for a cooperative uh school board member, or vacancy, when there's a vacancy, um, the members of the board uh from that town pick the uh replacement. So in this case, with Dave's leaving, uh, the four other members of the, of the Am- Sohegan Board who are representing Amherst, uh, which would be uh Laura Taylor, Stephanie Grun, Steve Coughlin and Amy Facey, those four members are charged with picking Dave's replacement. Um, and in addition to that, those discussions are actually in public and need to be had in public, which is something that can happen now, um, or at a subsequent board meeting. The way the process works, when a vacancy exists, um, the person who is uh picked to replace that person fills that vacancy until the next election and at the next election, which happens in March, uh, the rest of Dave's term uh will be up uh for people to run and go through the normal election process. Um, so we uh sent out a uh, an advertisement um looking for uh people to volunteer uh for this vacancy, and so I can share that there were six applications that were received um and provided to the board. Um, those are John Glover, uh, and these are in no particular order, just the order they appear in our, our software program here. John Glover, Robert Hens, Christine Peters, Lisa Eastland, Tony LaBranch and Jay Cohen. And so really I turned it over to the board and specifically the four representatives from Amherst to decide whether you want to fill that position this evening and whether you'd like uh, and which of those people you'd prefer to uh fill the position. Legally, it does not have to be one of those six people, just to be perfectly clear. The board has the prerogative to pick anyone they want, they have to be um qualified for office, meaning they have to be domiciled in Amherst and be a registered voter. Um, and that's the only requirements, but these six people have raised their hand and have offered um uh to fill that vacancy. So with that, Pam, I don't know if you want to handle the discussions, um.
Sure, um, I'm happy to moderate since I have absolutely uh no vote in the say here. Um, you know, I, I will add one um, quick um, personal item, not, I shouldn't say basically, you know, so we, we are heavy in uh budget season, uh, so it might be something to consider as you're looking at candidates. Um, but, you know, that's just my own opinion. Uh, so I'm going to leave it up to the Amherst uh board members to move forward and pick who they think is best suited to fit the Dave's seat. Uh, Steve Coughlin has his hand raised, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, okay, so um um, so a, a, a fact and opinion, uh, the fact is that um this is the final year of Dave's term, so that whoever gets appointed will be, if they choose to run again, will be running for a full three-year seat, there'll be three-year term at the next election for, for this seat that will be elected. And, you know, the person we appoint may choose to run, may not, whatever, but I wanted everyone to know that, that um it's not, it's not like get appointed now, then have to fill a seat just for a year and then have to run again, again, uh, run again after a year. Um, and the opinion is, uh, because we are not deep into budget season, but on the precipice of budget season, I think it would be appropriate to get someone appointed tonight, so they can get in uh at the start of this, because as we all know, it's a complicated process and it's even harder to come in the middle.
Hey, Amy, you have a hand?
Yeah, I would agree, I think it um behooves us to look for someone this evening and um we do have a couple of previous board members and someone on, who was previously on um Advisory Finance, so I think it um, it would be helpful to have someone who could step right in, um, who isn't going to have a steep a learning curve uh to get acclimated to the budget process. So I'll just start the conversation there.
Okay, um, Stephanie has her hand up, so well, let's make sure we get any comments out of the way before, or I shouldn't say any comment. Whatever, go ahead.
Sure, um, yeah, I think uh we definitely there's, there's multiple things on our plate right now, right? There's budgets that are going on, there's mastery-based learning, grading and reporting going on, there's facilities issues going on, there's COVID going on, you name it. Um, having someone with maybe some experience could be good, um, someone who has experience in mastery-based learning might be good to have as well because of where we are in the process of implementing things. Um, trying to evaluate, you know, positives, negatives, all the so, yeah, so I think there's, and people who are, are close to the school, so have kids in the school, have recently had kids in the school, have some connection, I think, to understand where our teachers are right now and how hard they're working, how hard the kids are working and struggles that they're having. I think being able to keep all of that in mind is going to be very, very important.
Anybody else? Comments or anything, or do you want to, up, Steve, go ahead?
So we have six candidates, we have four um voting members here, so you can imagine all sorts of scenarios, and imagine all of us are all just dying to nominate and, and, and admit the same person. You imagine all four of us have four different opinions, and we have four different people, uh, or um anywhere in the middle, three to one, two to two. Uh, so I know the answer, but I will ask Adam to say if he knows what uh, for all of us, what happens if we can't agree? You're muted, my favorite phrase.
Ah, thank you. Uh, yeah, we, we're going to get some T-shirts printed that says you're muted. Um, so uh, in the event that uh the four Amherst representatives to the Sohegan Board cannot agree, RSA six seventy-one thirty-three requires that the Amherst Board of Selectmen make the choice on your behalf.
And if they can't agree?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure, um, they have
Stumped ya, here we go, it goes to the, goes to the district moderator.
That's right, thank you, yes, indeed.
Well, let's hope that uh we don't have to go all to, all the way there. Okay, so um you guys want to start your poll, yours, do a straw poll, or do you want to just get right into voting? Anybody have an opinion on that, desire?
I think we're all sitting here trying to figure out what to say.
It's honestly a little awkward.
Yeah, I, I mean there's a lot of great people and, and I, I'm so appreciative of everybody for putting their, their name in the hat and um and it's really difficult, if I could pick multiple, I definitely would. Um, I, I am leaning towards um choosing someone who has been on the board. Um, just because I think that that would be very valuable in this um budget season and it's a, a short window to, to get a lot of work done and we all have a lot of work to do, so that would be my preference um at this point. So, uh, but there's certainly a lot of great people, I just think diving right in and knowing, knowing our whole process, um, it, it would be helpful, so. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Do you want to just uh throw out your preferred um person then?
And, and there's two, two previous board members, there's um John Glover and um Bob Hens, both have been, John was um on the Amherst and Bob was as well, so.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll tell you, I've got two people that I'm interested in, um, and I'll just, I'll just put it out there, I, I think uh one is a previous board member and I'll just, I'll just start with the names out there. Um, John Glover is one I would nominate, I, he's uh, you know, he's got the experience with, with budgets, with policy, he sat on policy committee, he understands uh where we're going with strategic
He sat on Policy Committee. He understands where we're going with strategic vision with what we know. He had, he's been through the process of mastery-based learning. I think he's one really good candidate to consider. Another person, I will throw two out there so we can have a discussion about it, maybe. Christine Peters is somebody I would consider. She's got a lot of background in mastery-based learning, competency-based learning, a lot of experience with online learning in different situations. She's got experience with getting kids into college with different transcripts. So that's another name to consider. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Laura, do you have any names you want to throw out?
Well, I don't think we can deny that Lisa Eastland would be an excellent candidate. However,
There's so many good candidates.
Works for the SAU currently. So things would have to change for her. She'd have to give up a lot to be on the board. I also think, I think Glover would be a good candidate. And Christine Peters would be an asset to our board with her experience with the mastery-based learning model through several children in several different years, which is actually ahead of what we've experienced at Sauvignon. She kind of knows the pitfalls as well as the assets.
Okay. How about you, Steve? You have a couple of names you'd like to throw out?
Well, yeah, I could throw out six names, but because as others have said, I mean, this is a the people who volunteered to join us, they all bring something, they call, could bring something good to the board. So I'm not going to say that anyone is, is unqualified to be on the board. But in, in the interest of simplifying rather than confounding, I won't, I won't list two or three people. I will just say one. I, I was very impressed, impressed by Bob Hens when he joined the Amherst Board as an appointee when they had a vacancy. I thought he was just the epitome of what you want in a new board member coming on board. Proceeding cautiously, listening, learning quickly, and then contributing. And that is initial process of the Amherst Board really impressed me. And I, I, I think that would be well-served if he could repeat that for the Sauvignon Board. So that's my, my thought there.
Great. Well, so having heard from four of you, did a quick tally, and these are the, the numbers that I heard. So there was three people that threw out John Glover's name, two threw out Bob Hens's name, two threw out Christine Peters' name, and one that threw out Lisa Eastland's name. So between the four of you, and if y'all give each, you know, maybe now that we've got down to those four names and really, I don't know, you can do it however you like. I would suggest maybe that you then take a re-look at just those and maybe narrow it down now with just one vote each. We already know what Steve or who Steve likes. Maybe if each of you kind of say who your top candidate would be, that we can further narrow it down. If that's a method, you have certainly other methods if you, somebody else wants to do something different.
All right. So I'll throw my name out there. I'll go with John Glover.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go with John Glover as well. And, and I just want to say I love Lisa Eastland too. And so appreciative of everything and all of your work, Lisa. I know you're listening. Thank you.
Okay. How about you, Laura?
Yes, I also wanted to thank Jay Cohen for putting his name in. He's been a great asset to the community of Amherst for the, over a decade that I've lived here. But yeah, all, John Glover. I'll support him.
And Steve, if you'd want to stick with Bob Hens, that's fine. So the current tally then, as I see it, is there's three for John and one for Bob. Again, that's 75% of the voting members.
Well, let me say, I, I don't want to be the, the, the no vote here. Certainly, John, John is a fine candidate and I have no, no problem with him joining the board. So assessing my chances of persuading the other three people to change their minds is zero. I, I will change my position and, and vote for John happily.
Okay, well, great. Well, then I know John is one of our attendees. So congrats to, to John. Welcome to the Sauvignon Cooperative School Board for interim term of Dave Chen's seats. And again, as others have said, thank you to all of the interested parties. There were some really good names. I personally only know two of them. But, you know, I've seen most of the other names and other things as well. And I'd like to even give out a special shout out for, to Tony LaBranche, who I don't know at all, other than I know that he ran for school board last spring as a senior in high school and is continuing to pursue these types of things. And I'm sure you've seen his signs for state rep as well. So good luck to him and his future endeavors there as well. So again, congratulations.
Take a formal motion on this.
Okay, that's, you're probably right. So in that case, who would like to make the motion?
I'll move.
Go ahead, Steve.
I moved, I moved to appoint John Glover to fill the vacancy in the school board until the March 2021 election.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so moved by Steve, seconded by Amy. We'll do a roll call vote of the four voting members. Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACES.
Stephanie?
Grun, yes.
And Laura?
Taylor, yes.
Okay, now it's unanimous. And now congratulations to John.
Just, I would say mechanically, it would be nice if you guys sworn in before tomorrow, but it's not necessary. And Adam can do it. I can do it. There are many people who can do it. The town clerk can do it.
Yeah, so I have the, the oath of office available. I can send it to you, John. I just made John a panelist, by the way, so he should be in the meeting. But John, if you could either connect with myself or Steve Coughlin or the town clerk tomorrow, that would be great to make you official.
Is it something that has to be done in person, Adam, or something that can be done virtually?
It needs to be attested by either the clerk or a justice of the peace. And so I, I actually just don't know if any of the governor's emergency orders allow for virtual oaths or for a JP to take an oath. And I, for one, will not risk my commission as a justice of the peace to, to mess that up. But, so I'm sorry, I just don't know that.
Yeah, the consensus in the moderators is it's going to be done in person.
Well, I'll bring my mask.
Yeah, I'm sure Adam can do it six feet away from you. I could do it six feet away from you.
Well, just let me say thank you for your deliberations. Thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to serve. And I thought all the names on the list of people who volunteered were solid. I agreed with Steve that anybody and others, and anybody on that list would be fine servant for our, our community. And I aim to do a fine job for everyone. Thank you.
All right. And one last item then related to that is, so Dave was on the Technology Committee for the budget review. And so if you don't mind, John, you can take his place in that Technology Committee. Okay.
No problem. Technology Committee, yes.
Yep.
And whatever other roles Dave was filling, you let me know and we'll, we'll sort that out.
Yep, that sounds great. And I would ask Michelle if you can forward any of those Technology Subcommittee meetings to John, so he knows when those are, meetings are taking place. That'd be great.
Definitely. I will do that.
Thank you. All right. So we're through that process. We're now in second public input of the evening. Let me see if I see anybody. I'm not seeing anyone, so I'm assuming everyone's good. Unless somebody else sees. And I don't see any, Adam, am I missing something? No? Okay. We still have a non-public to go into, Adam? Yes, okay. So I'll take a motion, actually, since this really is typically where the end of the meeting would come afterwards and everyone would drop off. So before everyone does that, now I'll take my couple of minutes and, and, and say a few words about Dave. So they've, hopefully, you, you take this for what it is. So I don't know if you had an opportunity to hear what Adam had to say, but my comments are also very similar to his. So I really wanted to take a few moments to publicly thank Dave Chen for his hard work and dedication to Sauvignon High School during his time on the board. He always had the best interest in mind for all students as well as the taxpayers, as we know. And thanks to Dave, all high school students now receive laptops in their freshman year. And no additional cost, no more than, you know, the purchasing and maintaining of the computer carts that were previously used in the school. Dave's always been a big proponent of the STEM curriculum and, as we all know, is always pushing for better math scores, which is great. I think we can all agree that Dave is the king of motions. And he's probably brought forward more motions than any other board member over these past five plus years. But the best part about his motions is that, you know, regardless of the outcome, they made us really think and encourage thoughtful discussions. So that, that was really good. And while Dave and I may not have agreed on everything, I always respected his opinions and insights and really enjoyed getting to know him over these years. So Dave, on behalf of the board, I'd like to wish you and your wife, Crystal, best wishes as you embark on your new chapter and really get nice and close to your grandkids and enjoy them as, and as well as your own kids. So congrats on your new chapter and best wishes.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, everybody. You know, I may be close to my grandkids right now because they're shouting over my head. So maybe you can't hear me. But, you know, I, it's sort of, I mean, I agree to, agree in a different way with Tim. And that is just that, you know, it's always, here's my one grandson here. Doesn't he look like me? He's got blond hair and blue eyes. You know, you wonder about that sometimes. Anyway, so you know, Tim's right. I really did have the best interests of the students in mind. And I thought that we had to think about that as long and hard. And sometimes it's not, it's not easy, you know? And, you know, everybody looks at it as a challenge. And I think it is a challenge to be a good board member. And, you know, fortunately, I served with a lot of good board members. So I really can't complain about that. And, you know, the, the best thing about it is you keep your mind active. You keep your mind learning about things. You keep on thinking about problems and how to fix problems and what the problems might be and how to overcome some issues and that kind of thing. And, and I would encourage all of you to keep that going because it is, believe me, the thing that is the thing that keeps you all, all active. I'm having a bad grandson day right now. Anyway. Anyway, so I wish you the best. And I really do mean that. I wish you the best in all the things that you do. You got some very difficult times ahead with COVID. And I know that, you know, I know that there's a lot of different opinions about how we should handle COVID, but a lot of different opinions, but I think in general, you guys will all come through it. And I think Adam's going to provide some good guidance. And that was one of the things that interested me to the very last moment. You know, I wanted to make sure that we had some analytics that could help us guide us through this COVID thing. And so, you know, fortunately, with Steve Brady's on board, he really pulled through and got some stuff out that I think, Adam, you're going to be using. And I'm very glad to have been involved with that to the very end. Now I'm done. Steve has taken over. And good luck. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate the words. Take care. All right. Now with that, I will take a motion to go into non-public.
Can, can I ask what we're going into non-public about? A, B, C, D, E, et cetera?
Yes, Adam, do you have that? A and C. Thank you.
Last thing is congratulations, John.
Thanks a lot, David. Appreciate that.
Yep, right on.
Okay, so I still need a motion. Can I have one?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
I'm, I moved to enter non-public under RSA 92, colon, whatever, A and C.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second.
So moved by Steve, seconded by Laura. We'll take a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACES.
Stephanie?
Grun, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Or is yes.
And Gronster, yes. Okay, we are in non-public. Thank you, everybody, for attending.